All right, good evening and welcome to the June 20th Board of Education meeting. If you would all please join me in a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and Dr. Byrne, we will begin with the Rye Recognition of Excellence Awards.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. In 2012, we introduced our student recognition program, the Rye Recognition of Excellence Awards. Tonight, I'm proud to congratulate seven outstanding music students who we are commending with this honor. Tonight's award recipients are music students from elementary school who participated in the NISMIA Solo and Ensemble Festivals this year. So for the students, if you'll please come up to the podium to receive your award as I call your name. Students of Rita Pizzano, Anna Johnson, 5th Grade Piano. Dexter Record, 5th Grade Piano. Students of Vera Timochko, Brandon Abate, 5th Grade Violin. Had a busy day. Regan Woodford, 5th Grade Violin. Avnito Paul, 5th Grade Violin. Students of Thomas Koo, Ren Oyama, 1st Grade Piano. So let's have one more round of applause for all of our students being recognized tonight. Congratulations to all of you on your outstanding achievements in music this year. And now, if you'll join us, I don't think the teachers are here this evening, for some photos, right? Stay where you are, and Mrs. Derman's going to get some photos, and any family that wants
Okay, and now we will have our special acknowledgements for the recognition of the retiring PTO and PO presidents. Mrs. Boyle?
We are grateful for our parent organizations in Rye and for those who step up to lead them. Tonight, we recognize and thank the PTO and PO presidents who are completing their terms after generously giving of themselves in service to our schools. These volunteers who lead the parent organizations of the Rye City School District, partner with the superintendent and the principals, and organize an army of other parents to enhance the quality of each child's educational experience in so many ways. The parent organizations raise funds and provide incredibly generous gifts to the district to support cultural enrichment, curriculum and teacher training initiatives, technology resources, playground and athletic equipment, scholarships, awards, and much more. I don't know how there could be more, but there is. They regularly communicate with parents to keep everyone up to date. They throw events that bring our school community together and create incredible school spirit. They collaborate with school administrators, faculty and other staff, and the Board of Education in ways that help Rye stand out as a tightly knit community that values education and supports our schools. On behalf of the Board and the entire district, I extend great thanks to the following. Please come forward to accept a small token of our deep appreciation for all you have contributed to our school community when I call your name. Petron Emeth, Rye High School PO. Carmelita Chavez, Rye Middle School PO. Fiona Shop, Milton School PTO. Wendy Woodford, Osborne School PTO. Wendy couldn't be here this evening as she has family in town for her daughter's moving up ceremony, and they are celebrating. Suzie McKay, Rays. Thank you, and I think Sarah would like to get another picture. So thank you to all our retiring PO and PTO presidents.
Please, we understand if you choose not to stay for the rest of the board meeting, we will not be offended, but we do thank you and congratulate you on your accomplishments. Okay, and with that, we will continue on with the report of the superintendent. Dr. Byrne?
Thank you very much. Good evening, and thank you for joining us for our June 20th Board of Education meeting. This is the final board meeting of the 2022-2023 school year, and we will hold the annual reorganization meeting on July 13th. On Friday, we held the 92nd Annual Rye High School Graduation in Nugent Stadium outdoors. At 4:00, I was at Mamaroneck, and it was pouring, but we knew, we were looking south, and there were bright skies. But I have to say, I can't remember ever making a weather call that came with more pressure than Friday, and I had some folks comment to me that that was quite a stand I took on the weather on Friday. But fortunately, Mother Nature cooperated, and we were able to have graduation in Nugent Stadium in a short window between downpours. There was an army of us drying seats off before everyone arrived. So I wish to thank everyone who sent prayers, hopes, and wishes. Whatever they did, it worked, and the graduates and their families were so relieved and grateful to be able to be outside. A huge thank you to everyone who worked so hard to make the event a success. While you may not have seen it, we had two full setups for graduation, an indoor setup and an outdoor setup. So I'd like to recognize the high school custodians, the administrative assistants, the high school administrators, and a really special thank you to Gabby Peruccio, Caitlin Sasson, Rob Gemigliano, Luigi Liotta, Kathy Vigiano, and Tracy Barnett. I also wish to thank the Rye Police Department and Fire Department for their incredible support as well. But the operations team made this all happen, and they were working like lunatics all week long getting ready for this, but thank you all very much. I would be remiss if I didn't note other celebrations taking place this week. Just this afternoon, Osborne School's 5th Grade Moving Up was held, Milton's is tomorrow, and Midland's is on Thursday. Our Rye Middle School 8th Graders have their moving up ceremony on Thursday as well, and there is not great weather forecasted for Thursday and Friday.
Nor is there a window.
Yeah, there does not appear to be any kind of window. People should start going to synagogue and church and mosques now and lighting lots of candles. On Friday, we will hold the traditional closing ceremony and the official start of summer for our teachers and staff. So I want to wish everyone a wonderful summer full of things they like best, be it travel, catching up with family and friends, or just lazing about in the backyard with a good book. That concludes my report for this evening.
Well, I will say, it has been quite a year, and it's been nice to be kind of back to normal. So I've enjoyed it, I hope you all have as well, and I look forward to the 23-24, but I most certainly will enjoy the summer before we get there. But before we get there, let's talk about the Capital Project progress update. Dr. Byrne?
Well, we're really excited because as we're talking about wrapping up the school year and all the good things that are happening this year, as the Board knows, we're always thinking about how to make things better and improve and look ahead to the next year, and tonight is going to look ahead to the next two years or so. And I want to pass the baton over to Gabby Peruccio, who's going to take the lead in tonight's presentation.
Thank you. Before I get started, I just want to give a shout out to our audience. We actually have our team of professionals here joining us from the construction team. So we have Empire Core who's here, we have Ryan and Florum, they're our construction managers. You have Lawrence in the middle representing Burilly Gallagher, our engineers, and you have Barbara on the end there, she represents the architects with Gaddis Architects. I also have to give a shout out to Caitlin and Rob. They endure all of our construction meetings and are in there every day as we go through this process, so thank you, everybody. Just reminding everyone, we are completely rooted in the Rye commitment when we took on this project back in 2019 as we were talking to the community. This is where it all started, so thank you very much for that. Project progress, just to give everyone an updated timeline if all goes well, and we anticipate what's going to be happening in Phases 3 and 3A, and I'll remind everybody what that is. We hope to be able to close out all of our projects by the end of 2026. This was the long list of projects that we decided that we were going to take on as a result of the generosity of our community and the $79.9 million initiative. Just to remind everyone, what was completed in Phases 1, 2, and 1A throughout the buildings, it was a big lift. We have a little bit more to go, and that's what we're going to be talking about and focusing on tonight. These were the remaining projects that we talked about when we came to you last in January to identify what was left on that to-do list, talking about at that time what we thought we could identify as what would be known as Phase 3 and 3A. Just to remind everybody, we've labeled them in phases just to kind of keep it straight as to what all the different projects are, but there's really no significance other than to us internally how we label or identify the different phases. Now that we fast forward, and it's June, thinking about what we think we can handle in terms of construction and what the finances will allow, we've also tried to prioritize what's left on the to-do list. So it's the same list that you just saw, but prioritizing it in priorities 1, 2, 3, Talking about the Capital Project budgeting, just to remind everyone, how do we develop a project budget? It's a little backwards because in order to develop a project, we really have to do a lot of upfront work in order to be able to formulate what a project is going to look like and go through the motions of getting SED approval. So we take a very high-level look at the areas in which we want to try to address. We project budgets, anticipate costs years before we ever actually incur them, so this is quite the challenge. But the true project cost isn't realized until you actually pick up that hammer and go to work. Project budget elements, we've talked about this before, trade costs, which has to do with our contractors that we award, which a lot of that work you'll see come before the Board when we award bids, but then there's also our vendors that we already have engagements with that we also utilize to do some of the work. There's escalation, anticipating what inflation is. Because we are projecting projects and we don't actually get to the construction of a project, you do have to anticipate what the cost will be related to those projects years in advance, and that's considered escalation. Construction contingency, because we are dealing with buildings that have aged, such as this one, sections of this building which were erected back in the 1930s, you do have to build in contingencies because you never know what you're going to find once you actually put yourself to work in doing the reconstruction and construction projects. Incidental costs include the architect, engineer, and construction management fees, environmental consultant fees, surveyors, legal fees, finances, advertising, anything related to what keeps a project going is considered incidental costs. Having said that, we take a look at, and I will remind everyone, the last time we were here together, we had remaining funds approximately $29.25 million of what was left. On the left side of the screen, what you'll see are the original 2019 estimates of what we believe are the projects that we can manage out of priorities 1 and 2 from the list of remaining projects. So you'll see on the far left, we've prioritized our projects, we've identified the building, what the project is, so it's the High School/Middle School Media Center, the High School iLab, the High School/Middle School Performing Arts Center, Midland New Edition, Osborne New Edition, and Priority 2 is High School/Middle School Art Design and Engineering Center. We anticipate that we will be able to start construction on these projects as identified here between the spring of 2024 and the spring and summer of 2025, realizing that taking on those projects at the high school will require two cycles of summer construction. Again, the next column identifies what the 2019 estimates were back when we originally started this process for those projects. I do believe that it's important to put that information out there, but I would also say that we've taken a new look at these projects, so scope as well as design of these locations has changed, and knowing that these estimates are coming to us from 2019, they've certainly changed, being that it's 2023. So having said that, with working with our professionals, we've identified what we believe would be the estimated construction costs related to those projects above that first line that divides the figures on the far right side, totaling $23.5 million. When you add to that your professional fees related to our folks in the back of the room, plus your incidentals, design contingency, construction contingency, and escalation, realizing that, again, the project identified as the Art Design and Engineering Center, we wouldn't begin construction until the summer, or, excuse me, spring, summer of 2025. We would have to build escalation related to that project. We believe that we can complete with the remaining funds all of the projects identified on this slide. It's also important to note on the very far right of this slide that we've identified those estimates that have been made as a result of, we've gotten to a place where we have schematic designs on the Media Center, iLab, Performing Arts, so those estimates are based on what we believe to be related to design costs. When you look at the new additions at Midland and Osborne, those estimates are based on what we would consider conventional construction as we would any other place that we've done in the past. What we are exploring at this time is modular construction, meaning these spaces would be built off-site and then carted in and then placed on their location where they would be. The thought behind that process would be keeping costs down because much of the building would be off-site, it would all be predetermined, leaving very little in the field in terms of construction contingency because it would all be predetermined and designed. The last item on this list is the Art Design and Engineering Center. At this time, it isn't a fully designed space, so the remaining budget is being identified for that space, but it is strictly based on the funds that we believe are remaining outstanding. So we have to continue to work toward getting a full budget estimate based on design for that space. Having said that, we're going to move on. Any questions?
Can you talk about the incidental and contingency assumptions? Because I know they're lower than what we saw in the first phases, so just wanting to understand how those have shifted outside of our estimates for Phases 1 and 2 and our actuals.
So if you recall, when we originally came out to the group, these incidental and design contingency and construction contingency percentages look much more like what they originally looked like back in 2019, right? And I believe that, and I can speak for Empire Core, but these reflect what's currently going on in the market. We feel that because we've adjusted what our estimates are for these projects, it is safe to apply percentages more in the range of what we were seeing back in 2019. I do believe that there's still some well-known supply chain issues, but in terms of what we're seeing in the current market, things have regulated, if you will, and knowing that we've priced these with current pricing, we feel comfortable that the 4, the 2, and the 10% that we're using at this time reflects where we are. Thank you.
So can I just repeat that back so I'm totally clear? So, and I think, what's occurring to me is that because the construction is going to happen much sooner than we were able to plan for in 2019, because we knew there was a significant lag time between when we were budgeting these things, estimating them, and when the construction was actually going to take place, does that help in looking at these percentages as they are now at the 4, 2, and 10%?
Yes, but the other thing you have to keep in mind is when we were building those budgets back in 2019, COVID did not exist.
Of course, yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, 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 but so, if you look at where we fared with Phase 1, and Phase 1 was bid and awarded in advance of what actually was happening with COVID, right? And we came in nicely as expected that we were going to. Phase 2 unfortunately was bid during a very unknown time, so you started seeing the impact of what COVID was doing. A, because we didn't know exactly how work was going to be carried out, and then that's when supply chain issues really started pounding us. So that is when we actually had to adjust what our percentages were for those particular items as we were going into Phase 2. What's happening now is we found a new normal. It's not a great new normal that everybody likes, but we've certainly been able to build these estimates based on what that new normal is. So we're comfortable in saying that. We can then go back to models of building in incidentals, design contingency, construction contingency, and escalation on numbers that we're accustomed to seeing, with the understanding, though, that the overall cost of building has increased. So that overall cost increase is being reflected in those budgets, so we feel comfortable that we can go back to lowering those percentages to something that we're used to and accustomed to seeing.
Okay.
Is that helpful?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I hope I did you proud. Thank you.
And I think it's important, you know, the "we" is the collective "we."
Correct.
Right? Because there are districts that are currently going through construction projects and doing things, and so the collective "we" takes the information from all of those surrounding and your expertise to then be able to create these kinds of scenarios.
Correct. I wish I could tell you that I am an expert in this area too, but that is why we rely on our professionals to come and bring us that specific knowledge as we're doing this work and building out these projects. So, any questions on the priority, the list, anything like that, before I move on to debt service and borrowing?
Sure. I would love to just get some, and I'm pretty sure we talked about this prior, but I think it's always great to kind of revisit, how and why priorities determinations were made from a strategic district level, as well as a construction, right? You don't want to touch the same space twice, kind of those theories of building.
Correct. So we're very mindful of that. We continue that process in every step that we take. I think it's also important to know that we've not straight away from our commitment to any space that we go in, we're addressing code compliance issues. So that's happening without being said, right? Any space that we go in and touch, we make sure that when we leave it, it's fully completed, done, and ready to go from all aspects of it. In terms of how we made these priorities, to your point, it is about strategically when we go into a space, what we think we can, well, obviously what we need to get done, and then prioritizing it or adding it and making sure that when we enter into a space, that it makes sense logistically, so that, to your point, that we are not going back and touching the space twice. So as we fully and go into more development of these spaces, and we're looking at the Media Center and how that relates to where the High School iLab will be located, it all makes sense in terms of how we are attacking, if you will, the construction and the path in which we are taking to do it. Obviously, the Midland School and Osborne School additions, that was formerly known as Phase 2A, we had gotten to the place where we had gone out to bid on both of those spaces, and those bids were just astronomical, and I do believe that it had to do with the timeframe in which we did that, so our intent was always to go back out and do those. Also taking into consideration, if we do go the modular route, that is something that we believe that we can get out to market quickly and that we can actually start that construction first beyond the fully developing of the High School/Middle School and those bids.
But we also, you know, as we're looking at the priorities, we're looking at the spaces that get the most usage by students and instructional spaces. So, you know, we know, you know, going back to Midland and Osborne, those portable trailers have to go. They are so far beyond their usable life that that's critical space that's needed for instruction. The iLab space, the Performing Arts Center, the Media Center, these are all spaces that are critical infrastructure and have significant... are critical infrastructure and have significant student usage in the course of the school day, and that had code compliance issues and ADA compliance issues that had to be addressed as well.
Related to the modular or, you know, versus conventional build?
Correct.
Is there any expectation or perhaps finger crossing that perhaps modular classroom builds would be also more cost beneficial? Or is it a cost neutral?
So we are exploring that. I, I want to hope, and if you can, exactly. But what I do believe will happen because of the modular build, because all of the decisions have to be made well in advance, it leaves little room for construction questions that come up in the field after the fact. There's very little work that happens that is a mystery, if you will, once those, once that lands in, in district, right? And that, to me, is the biggest benefit when you're dealing with four primes and questions that come up. So for me, that is the hope in which we will definitely see cost savings, because there is very little decision-making once you enter into this process.
Okay.
And I want to be clear. Modular construction is very different than portables. They are not the same in any way, shape, or form.
As a fun fact, I taught in a portable classroom.
Correct.
And I live in a modular home. I have spent time, right? I mean, the things I'm willing to share with the public. And I will say, my home is much nicer than my portable trailer classroom was, just as an FYI.
It is not a temporary space. Modular construction is, is meant to be permanent. These are permanent structures that will look just like the rest of the building. You would never know the difference. And so I just want to be clear about that. We are not looking to do the 2023 version of a portable classroom. That is not what's on.
I would hope not.
Some people would argue that modular homes are actually better built, because they are done in a controlled facility, just not, you know, saying, just want to share. So Gabby, is the $5 million for each of those, that estimate is?
Based on conventional construction.
Conventional construction. So the, the idea is that if, from a, from a, looking at it from a modular standpoint, it's going to at least meet that or, or be less?
Correct. Correct. It's a conservative estimate, right?
As usual.
Yes.
Which is very appreciated.
Yes. Yes. Any other questions before I move on to debt and borrowing?
Actually, I do have one. Sorry, go. Maybe it's the same. Let's find out.
So my, you had mentioned that there were scope and design changes.
Yes.
I'm certain, asking for clarification, that those changes are beneficial to the overall cost, but are certainly not impactful for the ultimate goal and instructional vision of those spaces.
You are 100% correct.
We've had the opportunity to learn, right? We, we've brought spaces online, and just like when you build your house, you're like, you know, maybe the window should have moved over just a pinch. Stuff like that, that we're just taking a second look, and we're using what we've learned from the spaces that we've already brought online to make these spaces even better.
Yeah, a, a good example is when you're trying to create a larger open space, like in the I labs, you can accomplish the same goal by having an oversized double door with glass as opposed to a full wall with glass, so that you're still able to induce some transoms and things. So there are some design elements that will give significant cost savings and will still have the same benefits of the spaces.
Was it the same?
It was not, exactly, but, but it's, it's, it's related.
Oh.
I think just to get a clarification for the arts design and engineering estimate.
Yes.
That, I think you had said that has not yet been designed.
Right.
So we would design based off of what it is that we think we can accomplish.
We haven't even written the recipe for that one yet.
Which is why it's priority two.
Correct.
Yes. Okay. And then for the escalation, the note indicates it applies to project start date of 2025 only.
Correct.
Is, is that because at this point for 2024?
So we believe that the, the estimates that we have in place here apply to any project that would start in 2024.
Got it.
Big then.
Got it, yeah. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Let's move on to debt service and borrowing. Okay. So I think just to review some key elements of debt service and borrowing, the biggest and what I'm most grateful for is that we have the misfortune of being in a school district with a strong fiscal management and financial position, which allows us, and actually it was just renewed in May of 2023, to maintain a AAA credit rating. That makes us very attractive when we go out to market, when we're looking to, you know, borrow money. Having said that, I think the other things that we just need to identify is the municipal bond market acts very differently than what we see on the private sector or what we're facing when we're, gosh, help me, trying to lease a car these days or go out for a mortgage and the interest rates that we're looking at. So it, it's different, and it doesn't apply the same. And the other thing we need to remember is, the community gave us, blessed us with the authorization to borrow 79.9 million as part of this initiative to go out and do construction to the tune of 79.9. So regardless of what happens with debt service, we have the ability to utilize 79.9 million. So if indeed borrowing 79.9 costs us more than what we believed it was going to cost back in 2019, that does not change our ability to borrow the full 79.9. One does not impact the other. What borrowing does is impacts the overall budget, and that's something that we talk about on an annual basis and the impact of that. So having said that, just to remind everyone, if you look to the, to the left of this screen, this is the replica of that very long, big chart that we were sharing back in 2019, what we estimated was going to, how it was borrowing the 79.9 was going to impact our total debt obligation, based on, at the time, just to give everyone a reminder, we had always talked about borrowing as we needed the funding, and we were going to utilize debt service tools, bans, and bonds as we were going through a multi-year process. Just to give everyone an idea, back in 2019, we talked about ban rates somewhere in the ballpark of 2.2 to 2.4, and bond rates in the ballpark of 3.25 to 3.35. And that was the result of what it would look like after we borrowed the full 79.9 and what it would do to our debt service obligation for the 30 years that we were discussing at the time. To the right side of this screen is where we are today with existing debt, and that's as recent as the borrowing that we just did. Just to remind everyone, we bonded what was the remaining balance of the Osborne furnace, which was 1.237 million. We bonded 20 of the 50 million that we've borrowed so far relating to the 79.9, and then we banned the remaining 30 million for another year's renewal. Having said that, just to give everyone an idea of where rates are today, and I know I'm, I'm giving out a lot of numbers, but just follow me here for one second. So we went out to market, the ban, which again was on the 30 million, came in at 3.6%. The bond, the $20 million bond, came in at 3.7%, and the 1.23 million came in at 2.88%. So I would have to say, we're, we're pretty close there in terms of where we thought we were going to be in borrowing. If anyone is interested, I did hyperlink the details, it just was too big to share with everybody, but the full debt service schedule of the existing debt is here, and if anybody wants, is interested in looking at it, it's attached to board docs, you can see the full service schedule out there. I don't know if I can make this bigger, can I? Sorry about that. So I don't know if anybody has any questions about where we are today in terms of where we thought we would be.
So just looking at the remaining debt column for 2023, and we see, you know, the first line for 2024 is 1.87, and then 25, 26, 27, and 28 are all, many are well under a million, and then two are just, just below. Are the, how are those related to the bonding and banning you were just talking about in terms of the interest rates that you were able to?
So those interest rates that I just spoke about are the actual rates that we received going out to market during this last borrowing.
Right. So I, so these are more related to, they're more related to the rolling off of older debt?
That's related to the new debt we just took on, and that's included in the existing debt column. That second column that you're, that you're looking at is the remaining debt? Okay. So what that is projecting is where we will be once we, so we're going to continue in the banning of the 30 million that we have outstanding, and a ban is an annual renewal up to seven years as a result of COVID. So we will, we will continue to renew those bans like we just did.
Okay.
In addition to, we will then be taking on the additional 30 million in borrowing. So depending on what market conditions are when we go out to do that, we will either make the determination that maybe we will lock in an additional amount of the borrowing into bonds.
Right.
And continue to roll bans, depending on where we are in the market, right? So that middle column under the 23 forecast is essentially a forecast of what we believe will happen as we continue down the process of essentially banning and borrowing
Right.
the remaining 60 million.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay. So that column actually mimicked what the entire columns were in 2019, because we hadn't borrowed any of it.
Right. Right. Right, and I just, I guess where I'm, what struck me as I was looking at this is that if, once you get past that 20, 28, correct, that the 995, I need a ruler, and you start looking at what we estimated for 29, 30, 31, even back in 2019, it's not that, we're not that far off.
No.
Even now.
Correct.
And I think that's what I wanted to.
Correct.
Point out, is that we're.
We were, we were, we are very close in terms of rates on what we thought was going to happen.
Right.
In 2019, and where, what we're seeing in the market in 2023.
Right. And if those few years hold where it is significantly lower, that's, that's, that is a significant difference from a operational budgetary standpoint.
Correct.
In those years, that we would, we were not projecting were going to happen.
Correct.
Before.
Correct.
Nice little surprise. Okay. That, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yep.
Thanks.
Any other questions about borrowing and the impact? And we'll be talking more about this, obviously, next go around in terms of budgeting. We are already planning in terms of how we will be maintaining that, because obviously, in addition to the overall impact it has on the budget, debt also has an impact on the tax cap calculation.
Right.
So that's something that we always have to keep at the forefront as we go through the process of, of budgeting. Any other questions?
I would just sort of go, sorry, going out of the money, back to the design. Related to the amazing modular potential, you know, because the spaces are amazing, what is the kind of timeline for, for those decisions, do you think?
So we are, so, right. So we are already looking at viable modular companies. As you can imagine, there, there are, there are some out there, right? But not many that are, that are versed with SED and working in schools and all that other stuff. So we are certainly finding those resources. Thank you, group, again, and going out there and testing the market around what do we believe is going to be an estimate around what modular would look like compared to conventional. So they're starting to come back in, we're starting to get data around that, but not fully ready to.
No, no, no.
But we are, we, we.
Already in the exploratory phase.
Absolutely. Because if we are going to make the spring 2024, we need to get going.
That was actually going to be another question.
Yes.
Was knowing that very long, drawn-out process that the state requires for any sort of approvals to be able to do anything, how are we feeling about that?
Right. So the good news is, right, the state already knows that we had intended to put additions on Osborne and Midland, so this isn't news to them. So we are hopeful that with making some modifications around the design that's been shared with them and whatnot, that we can get this done.
I, I will say, one benefit to talking regularly with the commissioner is that the new person in charge of the facilities department, her cell phone number ended up in my possession. So we have a new friend in Albany.
And again, we can do it, you know, we can do it parallel, right? We can be working with these modular folks to nail down those designs and really get everything in, in our ducks in a row and ready to go. So as soon as we get that approval, it's a much smaller field, and it's not this complicated bidding thing where you need four primes and whatnot. You're really focused in on working with one vendor who then brings in all of that other stuff.
I'm done asking questions. So anybody else? I clearly monopolized the time. No?
We were digging it out.
Well, that's true. All right. Well, obviously, this was very thorough, informative, and greatly appreciated. And for the professionals who joined us tonight, even though we didn't need you to come on up, because Gabby has done such a wonderful job informing us, we really do appreciate your willingness to come and be here tonight to support the district and the administration, and really the progress and the process of what's happening in our buildings. And so we thank you, Gabby, and the team, and Caitlin and Ram, you're part of that team as well. And so thank you all very much. This is a big project and something that certainly the community is very engaged in and excited about, and we continue to be excited about, and we look forward to all of the great developments to come. So thank you.
And, and just a thank you for all the work that's been done to date. If you, it struck me as I was looking at that very early slide, the phasing schedule, if you look at the amount of work that's already been completed, it's, it's pretty astounding over the last few years that, that we're, we're not the most stable of environments to be doing this kind of work in. So just, just an additional thank you on that, and the, you know, and the great strategy around the borrowing and, and always being on top of that, too. of that, too.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, we will move on to hearing of the public on non-agenda items. We welcome and encourage our community members to address the board at this time. Please come to the podium, state your name, address, and if you are representing an organization. To ensure everyone has the opportunity to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. The board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion, so please understand that we may not respond to your comments or questions at this time. We take your comments seriously and may need more time to process and research an issue. We will ensure questions will be addressed by the appropriate staff member or possibly answered at a future board meeting. We will not entertain comments regarding individual students or district employees as these are protected under state and federal privacy laws. Please know we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to follow the appropriate administrative channels. As a reminder, the community may always submit written comments at any time to the board by sending those to rcsdboard@rysschools.org. Seeing no one here from the community, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Can I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Tom Stein, seconded by Chris Ropero. Let's take a look. Consent agenda general. Consent agenda fiscal. Consent agenda professional appointments. Consent agenda classified appointments. Consent agenda special education. Okay, seeing no questions, let's have a vote on the consent agenda. All those in favor? That would be five to nothing with two absences. So on tonight's consent agenda, I will say it again for those in the back who may not have heard me before, the kids are going home, but the teachers are not. And so we have approved tonight some SEL, social emotional learning training, professional development, rather, professional learning for our staff on June 26th and 27th. For some, summer hasn't started yet. Hopefully, they will get a summer at some point. In addition, we have a donation for $11,207.93 from the Harvey School. And this is for materials for grades six through eight engineering to help us to continue and grow and develop our work in our engineering courses. And we are very appreciative of this donation. And in addition, we have a retirement. We have retirement for Dan Kennef, oh gosh, I can't do this, Kennefick. I want to put an L, Dan, I'm sorry, I apologize. Kennefick, it's not with an L. It is with great sadness that I announced the retirement of longtime school media specialist and middle school and high school librarian, Daniel Kennefick. When Dan joined the district full time in 2015, he was charged with improving the environment of the high school, middle school media center to make it a more welcoming place. He was instrumental in changing the culture of the center from a sparsely attended traditional library into an engaging, multi-use student space that served as a welcoming environment for all students throughout the day. Over the summer of 2017, he restructured the middle school space within the media center, and that, too, became a well-used and popular spot. Long before flexible furniture made its way to classrooms, he incorporated different furniture options to provide varied seating for students. In his 10 years in Rye, he was an active member of the Library Council through Southern Westchester Bowses. From 2015 until 2021, he served as Rye High School's National Honor Society Advisor. As such, he conducted the annual National Honor Society induction ceremony and coordinating the tutoring required of all NHS students. More recently, he was involved in a multi-year significant weeding project of the high school and middle school collections. Dan came to the district in 2013 as a school media specialist at Rye Middle and High School. Prior to coming to Rye, he was the school media specialist and librarian for six years at George Washington High School, for three years at the John Adams High School, for three years at PS241 Family Academy, and for two years at IS252, all in Manhattan. He began his career working at various branches of the New York Public Library, for 10 years as information assistant, librarian trainee, librarian, and finally, senior librarian with specialties in young adult and children's library settings. Dan has a BA in art history from Case Western Reserve University and an MLS from Columbia University School of Library Science. In his retirement letter, Dan said, "I have thoroughly enjoyed working with so many wonderful students, parents, friends, colleagues, and administrators over the years, and I will cherish the memories I have of them." Rye High School Principal Suzanne Short said of him, "From his gluten-free baking to his festive masks, Dan has provided a sense of investment in those around him that is much appreciated. He and his husband Mitchell have brought many smiles to people who work here over the years, and for that, he will be greatly missed. We wish you all the best in your retirement, Dan." Okay, now moving on to information and discussion policies. Mrs. Bowel.
Yes, thank you very much. So originally, when we added these, several of these policies to the list, we were going to be talking about, actually, there's just two policies in a regulation, but we were going to be talking about both of them. What I want to point out is that for student attendance, this is, we're using this as an opportunity for just information for this evening. There's a little more that the administration wants to try and do with looking at the language and understanding, a few more elements in terms of how we can capture data related to attendance. So we felt it better to pause. You can start taking a look at the changes that have been proposed. And as we've seen in, in past policy reviews, some of this is just a reorganization, some of it is new language that was meant to clarify and provide more structure around understanding what an excused absence is. So we will revisit this in September because we will revisit it as a policy committee when we meet in September to talk through any additional language that we want to include after the administration has a chance to review it. However, we, and the other piece on here is also just for information because the board does not approve regulations, but it is just the coding options for attendance that happens within our systems. The second policy to discuss for tonight is 5275, which is eligibility for middle school, high school extracurricular activities. And so part of the reason we were even going to talk about attendance tonight is because we were looking at eligibility initially based on some of our discussions with our athletics department and the high school as well, to make sure that we were addressing appropriately the eligibility issues for students and making sure that, you know, from a, from an inclusivity standpoint, that we were not applying something that was actually more harmful than helpful. So we did start to review this policy, and this is here for our review and discussion tonight. Primarily, the changes are small. You'll see, you know, where we've changed to, say, secondary students instead of middle and high school. We've changed some language that says "may" instead of "will" to give some flexibility for the administration. The piece that has the most significant addition is under Maintaining Standards for School Citizenship. And it is the opportunity for students who have been suspended related to alcohol and substance use or abuse to have another avenue of addressing their, addressing that discipline instead of only through a suspension. They would be given the opportunity to do a different kind of program or something that was more restorative rather than simply just the discipline of a suspension. So that language was added in that section. And then there was just a addition at the end under attendance criteria where it indicates that if a student has not been, has had to leave for an appointment of some kind during the day, that as long as it's documented as a required legal appearance or medical appointment, they will be able to participate in the extracurricular activity that evening. And then we cleaned up the language around what fully participate is defined as. So that's the very last sentence in the policy.
So I just have one clarifying question and a general conversation question, comment. So if we go back up to the fourth quarter final grades, and we see the strikeout through a student carrying two failures into the next school year will be ineligible, so that is no longer pertinent.
Right.
Okay. And then going down to Maintaining Standards for School Citizenship. The idea related to additional or different interventions for alcohol and substance abuse, I think, is really well done. I think it is something that is, you know, many times, students will participate in sports in schools as a way to have a sense of belonging, have a sense of connection. And so using this opportunity with that as the lens to then be able to find through alcohol and drug abuse or use, a way to perhaps provide more supports and different thinking around those, I think is really great. I would ask, as this now gets rolled out, because this would be, if adopted, this will be new as it relates to substance abuse, that perhaps through this initial rollout, that there be some thought given to extending it beyond just drug and alcohol abuse. And I use or provided an example of a student perhaps who is having some real anger management issues and impulse control issues, and not to a point of being defined or, or, you know, identified, but really is just what some people might call a hothead. And that's another expression for some of difficulties, of frustrations of things happening in other avenues that might be worth exploration. And so something perhaps like through additional ESS support or some other avenues that maybe with, if we see success in the drug and alcohol instances, that that could be something that as a district could also be taken under consideration in looking at more of an SEL approach.
Absolutely. So if you look at the paragraph above, it's, we're already able to do that. It will be more clearly articulated in the Code of Conduct as we make revisions to the Code of Conduct coming into the school year. That is, because again, it says maybe ineligible, but it goes directly back to the Code of Conduct. So there's some flexibility there that already exists.
Okay. I think it may be worthwhile then thinking about if that in fact, if this statement really holds true across the continuum of identified behaviors or reasons for exclusionary, or rather, I'll go with the positive, for maintaining the standards for school citizenship, perhaps then maybe there's value in thinking about putting that statement somewhere else. So it really is as a policy statement indicating that as a board, this is something we support as opposed to having to kind of dig into the Code of Conduct to find that that option is available for our community. That was all I have. Just breathe. No one else?
Anyone else?
All good.
Okay. So we will then do a second review of this in July when we have our next meeting.
July 13.
July 13.
At the Wayne Red House.
And.
I said that, and then I realized, I didn't know.
And we can continue that discussion there if there are more comments to be made.
Great.
Okay.
Wonderful. All right, thank you. Very exciting next information and discussion point, a website revision update. Dr. Sassone, come on down. Just don't do what that guy did today on The Price is Right. Did you see that?
No.
What's the word?
Dislocated his shoulder?
Yes, from celebrating.
Really?
Yes, and he couldn't spin, spin the wheel, so his girlfriend had to come up and do it.
What am I doing? That's terrible.
I know. Come on, sorry. I want to know.
Don't they now know you watched The Price is Right?
I watch the news. Sometimes I straighten it out in the background.
All right, Dr. Sassone, I'll stop.
Good evening, everyone. So we are very excited. We've been in the process this year of designing a new website. We're talking about first construction module homes, now we're talking about construction of a website, so it's very exciting. We're rebuilding all over. What we've been doing this year is really looking at our current website and also working in partnership with our new vendor to really build something a little bit different. So over the last couple of months, we've been sharing that Blackboard was bought out by Final Site, who will be our new website provider. And so we've had an opportunity to work with not only our internal technology team, our communications team within the district, but also Final Site as well and some of their designers to just kind of really pick their brain in terms of what's available for us. When we met as a team in the district, one of the things that we really looked in doing was streamlining communication because there's so much information out there that we need to get out to families, to parents, to students. And so that was one of our biggest goals is to make sure that we are streamlining information and that we are really showcasing all of our work through video and images and trying to be less text-heavy on our new website. It's a little challenging because there's so much to share, but that's definitely a focus for us. With that, looking at our current site to think about what are the aspects that we really love with our current site, but what are areas of improvement and things that we want to change. And so we've spent a lot of time going through each of our pages on our website, finding out what works well for us, but then also what does Final Site have to offer for us in a new, you know, more improved design. So one of the biggest features for this site that we are, or I will say biasedly, I'm in love with, is that it's going to be mobile-friendly across multiple platforms. So I know one of the biggest concerns that we've heard from families, even, you know, our faculty and staff within the district, is we have a website and then we have a different mobile app, and the information is there, but it's in different locations. And so one thing that Final Site is able to provide for us is to make this site mobile-friendly across any platform. So if you're viewing it on an iPad, if you're viewing it on a tablet, a laptop, a desktop, you're going to be able to navigate to the actual website through a web browser and get all the information that you need. We will share this out a lot over the summer, but there will be no need to install the Rye City School District app for anyone new. We are actually going to encourage anyone that has it to kindly remove it from your phone so that you're only navigating through the website. We'll say that 100 more times for you to be able to.
I will start doing it. I'm doing it tonight. I will remove it from my phone tonight.
But we are very excited for that because, again, with the goal of streamlining the information, we don't want parents to have to navigate between an app and a site. We want it in one place, just through the app. So before I show you what our draft is for right now, we've been really working hard on the homepage just to get visualization of what it could be. This is somewhat of our timeline that will have some flexibility and change, but this is what it is right now. So we are going to finalize the district homepage, which you're going to be able to see tonight by hopefully the end of this month, so by next week. In July, we are going to start building out our school pages and also adding content. By mid-July and August, hopefully going to be revising all of that content, working with department coordinators and all the departments within the district to make sure we're showcasing what they need. And then a launch date for the end of August, beginning of September, which we're really excited about. With that date, we are also going to be implementing Website Wednesdays, a pun off of our Tech Tip Tuesdays. But it's going to be to help families navigate new pieces of the website every Wednesday. So it'll be on social media and just a little, you know, nugget of information so you can navigate and know where things are. So we're going to have a lot of communication around how to navigate this. I do want to give Colleen a big shout out. She's been amazing in terms of helping me with the building of this site and our communication team, working with Jan and Jen and other board members and other, you know, staff members in the district about really understanding what works well and what we need improvement on. So hopefully you like the draft, but this is what we're going to go through right now. If you don't like it, I didn't make it.
Washing your hands.
So everything will be enlarged when it's fully launched as a site. Right now, this is just in preview mode, but we've really taken the elements going from top to bottom of, we really wanted a clean, slick look for. from top to bottom of, we really wanted a clean slick look for the site. And so, we wanted to make sure when we heard from different stakeholders within the district that there was easy navigation up here, always being able to get back to the home screen, being able to search anything on the website that actually works as a search feature. So, that will be a very popular tab.
Wait, let's just not, yeah.
Search is for the website.
Correct.
It doesn't send you to the Google.
It says not. You won't get any error pages or messages. It's actually built in within the site, which is great. And then, also a translation feature that will translate like 15 different languages, which will also actually work moving to our new provider. So, we're excited about that. Navigating across here, so we took some of the headings, again, feedback that we got from individuals that work really well, our About Us page, so About the District, if you're looking for basic information or for information around the superintendent, that will be navigated here, our Board of Education page, because that is frequently visited, our department pages, so for our business department, curriculum instruction, technology, human resources, all of that, special education, that will all be housed under here. All of our schools will be listed, faculty and staff for resources, and then family and community is something that we are now going to combine. That is some feedback that we've gotten in the past was, I am a community member, but I also have a family that live in Rye. Where do I find things? And so, we're going to put them together just to make it again, a little bit easier to search. Scrolling down from here, we're still going to be utilizing our image gallery, so you'll constantly see scrolling of images across the screen, but we also have the ability now with our new site to embed video as well. So, we have a lot of video in the district and sometimes no places to show that content, so that will be visible as there, as you can see. Some of the icons, just to point out very quickly, so up here, this little bell, that is also still going to act as our notification. So, anything that pops up in the district, if we're having an early dismissal, if it's budget season time and you need to vote, anything that we really want to broadcast out to families will be there. And then, if you click okay, it will go away. In the past, we've had some issues with that button, especially on a mobile device where parents couldn't actually scroll to hit okay for it to leave the screen, which could become frustrating at some time. I promise you, that will not be the case now that our website will be mobile-friendly across different platforms. So, we're excited to just have a little bit more, you know, mobility with that feature. We will also still utilize, or icon down over here, this blue individual. So, this is our Audio i Button. So, Audio is i represents our ADA compliant website. So, for anyone that needs support in navigating the site, whether it be from color, a screen reader, image readers, whatever that looks like for them, this entire site will be accessible to anyone that needs it just by clicking on this icon. So, that is something that's state mandated that we will have, and it'll follow through on any page that you navigate to. From down here, we have our frequently used icons. So, if you're looking for that one-page calendar or a district calendar, that's going to be the icon that you navigate to. If you need Power School in our parent portal, this will be the icon here. Our CSD videos or any of the videos that we take throughout the year that we put on here, our lunch menus, our staff directory page, and then student registration. So, these are just some frequently used icons that will always be visible. We then have a brand-new section for the Rye commitment because that's what we're about here in Rye, and so we want to make sure that is showcased on our website. It will be something that we build over time, but for right now, our vision is to have the commitment visible and have clickable links that will actually bring you to the document for anyone that wants to review it or see it. And then, moving forward as we grow the site, really bringing in student work and artifacts that show each area of the commitment that may be Phase 2 in our build-out of the site, but that is what our thinking is around of why we have this on the site. Our calendar down here for upcoming events will be, it'll look very different. We also put the tree in the background. I don't know if anyone saw the tree. But for the upcoming events, we want to make sure that we have the most upfront information available to parents so they don't have to click. Right now, on our current site, it's a very long list and you have to click to access the information. With this site right now, you're always going to get the month and the day, you're going to get the description of the event, and then a location and a time. That will also be linked to a map if we put in locations. So, you'll have four prevalent events going across, but if you need to see more, you can always click on View More Events, and then the website will open to the actual calendar and you'll be able to access it. We will also house our one-page calendar on here as well, so we won't lose that functionality. They'll just both be combined. Down here, this is going to be our News and Updates section, so we are going to have information and images of anything that's happening within the district. These will be stories that will be clickable, so you can see now if you scroll over them, you'll get a larger description of what that is, but then just by clicking Read More, it's going to open up into a friendly page that will tell you all about the news and events that's happening with that particular article. And you'll be able to scroll and get anyone that you want throughout the year. And then, our schools. So, even though we have schools at the top, we discussed the importance of having them at the bottom, but changing up the look a little bit in terms of what information is available for the schools. So, you're going to see our five buildings across. On our current site, when you hover over the schools, you only get to see the address. And now, what you're going to be able to see is the building, the address, the principal and the assistant principal of that building, and then also contact information in terms of phones and extensions. So, again, just a quick, you have the staff directory there available if you need, but if you know that it's something that you need an administrator for that building, their information will be readily available right here. So, that was something that we liked. These will also be clickable as well, so if you want to learn more information, you're going to click on the school and it will take you directly to that school page where you can scroll from the top. And then, at the bottom, you're going to see a list of our social media platforms that will all be hyperlink, so it'll bring you to our Twitter feed, our Instagram, and our Facebook, and then just direct contact in terms of getting in touch with the central office. So, this is our homepage for right now, and we're excited. Next steps would be to build out the school pages, but this is a glimpse as to what it will look like. Any questions?
What we're looking at here, and thank you very much, looks great and very excited for it to come. Is this something that is meant to sort of like snapshot here, or can the few community members who are not with us tonight, is that something that they could look at too if they wanted to, or this is just sort of for internal for right now?
Right now, it's for internal, but we can talk about sending it out if we need to.
No?
Looks fantastic.
It's very exciting, and it's not simple to do. And so, it is greatly appreciated for all of the time, energy, and effort that has been put in up to this time, and thank you in advance for all of the time, energy, and effort that it is going to take to get it ready for the parent population and the community population at large to see. It's going to be really exciting. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I just want to echo that because I think the other piece of this that's harder to see is all of the sort of streamlining that's going to happen from a content standpoint in the already existing body of the current website. So, not only does the homepage look great, it's much more streamlined, much easier to navigate. You know, hopefully, that will be the feeling of everyone. But, and a huge thank you to both you and Colleen McGreevy, who've done enormous work already in getting us to the place where we are now. So, you know, there's untold hours that goes into this, but it's a hugely important communication vehicle for the district. So, you know, it is a big priority and we've been wanting to do it for a while, and I'm so excited that we're this close. So, thank you.
We're very excited about educating everyone about where the information will land. I think one thing that we did on our old site was try to put information in multiple places just to help ease of access. And so, kind of shifting our thinking, we're working with the designers, is that just educating where the information is versus putting it on multiple page will really hone down on the amount of text and the amount of pages that we have. And so, it was just a little bit of shift of thinking with this, but I think that'll just definitely help us in the long run in term of like layout and navigation.
That's great. Wonderful. Thank you, Caitlin. All right. Communications to and from the board. I'm sure this is the part everybody's been waiting for. Board members will state their intentions regarding board officer positions. Mrs. Boyle, we're going to start with you.
Really?
You are welcome. I didn't want you to keep it in any longer. I wanted you to just, I know you've been really excited, so please.
Well, my intention is that you should stay president.
We're not here to talk about me. We're here to talk about you.
I mean, you are killing it, so.
I mean, I was told I have another career in comedy, so maybe that's something I'll think about taking up instead.
I think we still need to hone some of those skills in this current role.
Oh, okay. So, with my current capacity, I should continue my training and experience?
I wouldn't quit that.
Don't quit my day job.
Just wouldn't quit.
The day job that doesn't pay? Got it. Sorry. Okay. Mrs. Boyle, back to you.
So, I don't really know how to say this, but I would very much like to remain in the vice president role on the board if the board will have me. And I feel like it, I feel like I've been able to do some great support work for Jane and the administration in this role, so I would...
I would say you have.
I would appreciate and welcome taking on the responsibility again.
Okay, well, thank you.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes, well, yes. I would be honored and really, and this isn't a word I use very often or is used to describe me, I would be actually humbled to be able to continue in this capacity. I am by far quite comical at times, just to use words, but it all is rooted in a real appreciation and commitment for the mission and the district's work and the administration's work. And I am just honored to be a very small ant in a much larger picnic that goes on. And so, I think it would be, you know, I would be really excited and honored to be able to do it again. So, we'll see what happens at our July 13th meeting for all those. That's where nominations and votes will take place. Is there anyone else on the board who would like to make an intention known for board officership?
Okay, so, we'll see with the votes. We'll see what happens.
Instead of the ants, it was crickets.
Yo, nice job. I'm not a cricket, though. And I'm the ant carrying my food. No? Okay, moving on, sorry.
This is why I don't go into comedy. Clearly.
Oh, policy meeting, June 7th. What would you like to share with us from your meeting?
Well, essentially, everything we talked about tonight and didn't talk about tonight.
Perfect.
We spent the, most of the meeting discussing attendance and eligibility, and so, that will continue as we get to the next phases of policy, which will happen in September.
Great. And then, Mrs. Johnson, am I correct in knowing that there was a Transportation Pedestrian Safety Committee meeting?
Yes, there was a meeting, and I wanted to update more the community as well as the board that Commissioner Kope made a recommendation to TPS to change the regulation along Boston Post Road adjacent to the stadium, which currently reads as no parking. And he and the Rye police are finding it hard to enforce that because residents will be in their cars, situated, stationary in those locations, and telling officer they are actually not parking there because their car is on. And so, he would like to update the regulation to read no parking, standing, or stopping in order to allow for proper enforcement by the Rye police to make it safer for the student pedestrian traffic there. And this went through TPS, it was approved, it was then brought to city council, and they have opened a public hearing, which will happen in July. And so, you know, I'll update everyone in the fall, assuming that it does change, because I do believe the intention would be that enforcement would ramp up along that corridor to keep traffic moving, you know, especially during times of drop-off and pickup when cars do tend to park on the, stand on the side of Boston Post Road.
So, this is across from the snowlot?
Yes.
So, when it's raining and there's a long line and you're pulled over on the side and the police come, you're going to get in trouble now if you're idling or parking.
The regulation would allow for that.
Correct, yes. Yes, if they choose to enforce it that time, so you're not parking there, you're not idling, you're not waiting.
Right. So, there is a public hearing, I believe it's July 12th, at the city council for public to be heard on the recommendation from Commissioner Kope and then the potential for that regulation to be updated.
Okay, great. Yeah, I just wanted to be very specific because when I read it the first time, the language was unclear to me, so just making sure. Okay, great. Thank you.
Did they say if they were intending to let people like do drop-off in front of the stadium, pull over, let someone get out?
He was not at the meeting. It was a conversation he had with the chair of TPS who just actually said this will be raised to city council, but that could be something that would come up at the public hearing. Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Any other communications to and from the board? Okay. So, our next Board of Education meeting will be on July 13th at the Wainwright House and by 6 o'clock, 5:30? 5:00? I think it's 5:30. I think it's 5:30. We'll properly notice it and make sure that we share it with all, but at this time, the board will be returning to executive session. Can I have a motion to adjourn into executive session? Tom Stein, Secretary of Buy, Kelsey Johnson, all those in favor? 5:00, 2 absences. We will not be coming back out from executive session to the public, so at this time, I say good evening. Thank you so much for a fabulous school year, and we'll see you in July. Oh, no, yep, yep. Never mind. You did everything you had to do.